Good evening, Chair. Calls order Legislative Session Day 22-015. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by Councilman Johnson with this evening's prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All hands bow, please. Lord, we come before you tonight thanking you for all that you have done and will do. Now, Lord, we ask you to bless the sick and shut-in and allow us to work in your image. Lord, we ask you to put your hedge of protection over those who protect us. Let us never forget that we are all children of God. Let us work to the better and not divide it. Increase rather than be divisive. Lord, allow us to work for love rather than hate. All these things we ask in your name, Lord. We pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council may I have general consent to move to Item 5 on the agenda and return back to Agenda 4 thereafter? Thank you. Agenda Item Number 5: Consideration Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nomination. Executive Appointment, Board of Directors of the Hartford Center. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion for the new appointment of Nicole Biggs and Christine Klein to the Board of Directors of the Hartford Center.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointments of Nicole Biggs and Christine Klein. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroeds?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Hartford Living Treasurer Alice Watson Harland Remsberg may have a motion. Mr. Schroeds.
Council President, I make a motion to approve Alice Watson Harland Remsberg as a Hartford Living Treasurer as approved by the Hartford County Cultural Arts Board.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's moving seconded to approve Alice Watson Harland Remsberg as a Hartford Living Treasurer. Is there any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroeds?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment of Alice Watson Harland Remsberg as a Hartford Living Treasurer is hereby approved. Agenda Item Number 4: Presentation of Proclamations, Hartford Living Treasurer. Ms. Remsberg? Mr. Schroeds? Ms. Remsberg, would you and your family come forward, please, or friends? Chair.
I knew this was going to be a thing.
Come on, yeah, there you go. Mr. Wagner?
Whereas Alice Watson Harland Remsberg received the Hartford County Cultural Arts Board recommendation to the Hartford County Council for recognition as a Hartford Living Treasurer, and whereas Alice was raised on a farm in Foston, attended Towson State Teachers' College, then worked at Harlethang Gas, the family business. After having three sons, she formed a home-based business and became a substitute teacher at Youth Benefit School. And whereas Alice was a founding trustee of Hartford Friends School, member of the Foston Upper Crossroads Bicentennial Committee, and treasurer of Little Falls Friends Meeting, her firsthand knowledge of local history has been sought after by genealogists, historians, and authors. She was one of the authors of The Gateway and assisted in the Republican in Distribution of an Old Refrain. Alice has loaned historic artifacts to exhibitions at the Hartford County Historical Society, Jerusalem Mill, and numerous others. Recently, she was featured in Foston Magazine for articles on Youth Benefit Elementary School and the Chimney Corner Club. And whereas Alice was a docer-- a decen-- sorry, a docent at Ladoo-- yeah, you almost got to be a doctor-- docent at Ladoo Gardens, a Hartford County 4-H Club member, life member of the 4-H All-Stars, and participant in the Hartford County Fair and 4-H Camp. She was a judge and volunteer at the Hartford County Fair, a board member of the 4-H Camp, and judged 4-H County Public Speaking contests for many years. Now, therefore, we, the county exec-- the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this 10th day of May 2022, do hereby salute Alice Watson Harland Remsberg, a Hartford Living Treasurer, and be it further known that her lifetime experiences and contributions to the Hartford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Hartford County, and that her memories and history will be recorded by the Hartford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become a part of the oral history collection of the library.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
It's a great honor to present this to Alice. She's one of my dearest friends, and we go back a long, long time. It goes back to our work with Mount Soma, which was part of the Amos family's original property in Hartford County. And, you know, I know you've done so many things, and of course, I also remember you and your sister Judy Harland and your help with the Belvedere Farm and the flowers and all of that. But you've done so much for this county as it was read, and to read the application that was put together, I mean, it's-- you've done a lot. I mean, we couldn't put it all into proclamation. It was like five pages long. So, we really appreciate everything you've done for Hartford County and wish you the very best in your future, and just thank you so much.
Thank you. I've enjoyed being a part of Hartford County all my life.
Give it to Mike.
My family.
That's also very much a part of Hartford County. So, thank you very much, and this has been a surprise.
Yeah, I know. It was a big surprise.
My family is all here. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We have to make sure these pictures are right because her son, Dad, is like a famous photographer. No pressure.
No pressure, right. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda Item Number 6: Special Presentations, Traffic Safety Advisory Board. Counsel, it's my pleasure. Welcome, Mr. Eric Robey. Would you come forward, please? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I don't know how I follow that presentation, but we'll give it a shot here. For the record, Eric Robey, Director of Legislative and Community Affairs for the Hartford County Sheriff's Office. I'm pleased to be here this evening, representing Sheriff Gaylor, who is the legislatively mandated Chair of the Traffic Safety Advisory Board. And I'll let them finish up in the back.
Go ahead, Mr. Robey.
So, tonight, we will present to you the Traffic Safety Advisory Board update, our annual update to the council, bringing you up to speed on the mission, vision, and plans for traffic safety here in Hartford County. Starting with Bill 2115, sponsored by Councilman Chad Schroeds, this bill changed the makeup and composition of the Hartford County Traffic Safety Advisory Board. We went from 19 members to 21 members. We added a representative from the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, Healthy Hartford and Bike Hartford, to join the board. Also, last year, during the five-year interim plan, the Hartford County Strategic Highway Safety Plan was written and approved. You have a copy of that in front of you. I'm just going to briefly go over some of the highlights of the plan. The Highway Safety Plan is modeled after the National Transportation Safety Board. They use highway safety plans all around the country as a benchmark, as a best practice for local and state highway administrations to put together plans that focus on specific needs areas in their community. The Hartford County Plan, we wrote our first highway traffic safety plan in 2011. We were actually the first jurisdiction in the entire state of Maryland to have a local highway safety plan. We've updated the plan in 2015, and we have the update before you today. That is the 2021 through 2025 update. Just some highlights from the plan. What this is going to focus on is emphasis areas. So, in Hartford County, we focus on four emphasis areas. We call it the four Es: engineering, enforcement, EMS, and education. This is a five-year plan, so everything that you'll see in there takes an average of what we've seen through whether it's traffic accidents, fatalities, individuals running off the road. You're going to see all that data compiled for the last five years in the plan. As you'll see, if you turn to, it's like page number nine, we talk about fatalities. So, during this time period of 2015 to 2020, we averaged 19 fatalities a year on Hartford County roadways. I'm pleased to tell you that from 2021 through the first part of 2022, in 2021, we had nine fatalities, so that's a reduction, a significant reduction, and in 2022, we have so far six fatalities on our roadways. So, we're starting to see these numbers come down, which is a very good sum. If you look, if you look further, we talk about drivers in Hartford County. So, here in Hartford County, 4.5%. So, what that number means is, of the entire state of Maryland, 4.5% of all drivers that are on the road have license and live here in the state of Maryland. But if you look down further at the accident numbers, only 2.9% of the traffic accidents that have occurred in the state of Maryland are actually Hartford County residents. So, again, shows that our education, our enforcement efforts are making a difference. Councilman Bueller?
I just want to put a page.
So, we are on page-- we're on page six right now. So, if you're looking at page six, Problem Identification, you'll see there 4.5% of all licensed drivers in Maryland come from Hartford County, and yet only 2.9% of-- Hartford County only accounts for 2.9% of all traffic accidents in the state of Maryland. So, if you're reviewing further, turning to page eight, you'll see there we do a breakdown through page eight and 11 on accident data and related causes of these crashes. Speed, impairment, distracted driving, and infrastructure-related accident causes are what we're measuring here. And as you'll see, the major, the major, major causes of what these accidents relate to are infrastructure, infrastructure challenges, and distracted driving. So, these are two areas of emphasis that Hartford County will be focusing on 2021 through 2025 in the plan. And finally, just briefly, if you turn your attention to page 13, interesting statistic that we found here. If you look at the chart, you'll see that fatal accidents, so almost, actually, it's a little over a third of all fatal accidents that have occurred, the individual's not been-- the individual that unfortunately passed away was not wearing a safety restraint when they were in that accident, when they were involved in that accident. And then if you further look down at the chart, you'll see that when you're dealing with all injury-related accidents, it's less than 5% of those individuals did not have a safety restraint on. So, it's pretty clear that the data supports wearing seatbelts in Hartford County and throughout the state of Maryland. Also, as a note, one thing we did find, we do seatbelt surveys from time to time throughout the county, and the state average is around 90%. Hartford County was just below that at 87%. So, that's one thing. I can tell you that the end of this month, we'll be doing a big seatbelt operation. It's called Border to Border. So, you'll see deputies and Baltimore County Police Officers at the Hartford County-Baltimore County border that will be checking for-- checking to make sure individuals are in compliance and wearing their safety belts when they're out driving their motor vehicle. So, that's just a brief overview of the 2021-2025 plan. The Sheriff's Office, we're responsible, we feel like we're responsible certainly for the enforcement side of things, but we also take a-- we play a big part in the education side of traffic safety enforcement. So, a couple initiatives that the TSAB and the Sheriff's Office are partnering with, school bus stop arm cameras. We came before the council about a year ago and explained to you this program that had begun, a pilot program. That pilot program is still ongoing. There's two additional vendors that the school system are exploring before we move forward with a full implementation of a school bus stop arm camera program. We recently just conducted a mock crash at Patterson Mill High School that was in part with the Chesapeake Regional Safety Council. So, that was depicted, a mock crash where a teenager was distracted by use of a cellphone. They ran through a work area. We had our friends from the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Department, Hartford County Sheriff's Office, Maryland State Police, Maryland Transportation Authority, and a number of other partners that participated in that exercise to show students what happens when they're not paying attention behind the wheel of a vehicle. Some other initiatives we're doing specifically, Sheriff's Office, if you have Facebook or you have social media, I'm sure you've seen our good traffic sergeant, Jerry Eaton. He has his Traffic Tip Tuesday. So, the goal of that is to provide education, information, and statistics to residents of the county about how to stay safe when they're behind the wheel of a car. Radar request list, I know we get calls, number one issue in Hartford County is somebody speeding through my neighborhood, and it's the worst speeding problem in the entire country. Everybody believes that, and certainly, we do keep a radar request list, and that is used for our traffic enforcement deputies, which we have a sergeant, a corporal, and three deputies that work traffic enforcement in Hartford County, for them to be able to go out and get an idea of the area, the problem areas where we're seeing excessive speeds, reckless driving, and violations of traffic, violations of traffic law. And then, of course, the Hartford County Traffic Task Force, this has been up and running for about 10 years now. So far this year, we've conducted 11 enforcement details partnering with the Aberdeen Police Department, Havitt Grace Police Department, Maryland Transportation Authority, Maryland State Police Bel Air Barracks, and MSP JFK Barracks. During these 11 operations, we've initiated over 1,000 stops and issued a number of citations, and also made 20 arrests during these details, everything from CDS to gun possessions. So, that will conclude our presentation for today. Again, the Traffic Safety Advisory Board meets monthly, again chaired by the Sheriff of Hartford County. We thank Councilman Schroeds for his work in establishing the legislation to set up the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, and he's a strong, supportive member of the board. So, if you have any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Robey. Mr. Janjordano?
Good evening, Mr. Robey. Thank you for the presentation. So, I can tell you this, that the number one cause of accidents is distracted driving, cell phones, and texting, and that's been that way for about the last four years. So, I can tell you with certainty that that is the number one cause of accidents. Number two, Sergeant Eaton actually did a study, a pilot study for me, based on flashing stop signs. He did identify four stop signs, four-way stop signs, Vale Road at Red Pump, Prospect Mill at Thomas Run, Ross Road at Meadow Road, and Perry Avenue at Hornbeam. And what I had asked him to do was look at the possibility of installing stop signs with flashing LEDs that were solar-powered along those. I did bring that up at the budget hearing. Hopefully, that's something, I don't know how we move forward and get a pilot program to see if we can get those implemented, but obviously, you're here, and I'm going to bring that up to you, and hopefully, that's something that we can look at doing. I just saw the other day where there was a speed sign that was with radar that was using solar. I don't know what that cost, but I'm thinking that if we can find that somewhere in the budget somewhere, that we can look at that. And I told Mr. Sergeant Eaton that I would keep, continue to work on that. So, if there's anything that you can do to get that program out and see if we can implement those, I think we would appreciate it. I would, especially with traffic and safety and being in the insurance business. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. And Mr. Schroeds?
Thank you, Council President. Nice presentation, Eric. It has been a great working group. This is a group that comes together, and everyone involved, they're the decision-makers, and it's not just the Sheriff's Office. You know, we've got all the municipality police agencies involved. We got state highway engineers, we have county engineers, we have residents, we have other organizations represented. Most recently, we added one of the, you know, we added several, but we were hearing from the bicycle group. So, they were, you know, they were coming to the meetings, but we made them official. So, they now have a voice that will, you know, be there, but it, you know, we were one of the, I'm proud of this, we were the first to form a local group like this in the entire state, and we have won awards for our highway safety plans in the past. So, you know, and like Mr. Robey said, it is open to the public. Anyone can come, and I encourage your participation in that group, and I think, you know, keep doing great things by coming together and collaborating and communicating and getting everyone in the same room. So, I think it's been a very good group.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeds. Mr. Robey, were you going to respond back to Councilman?
Oh, I was just going to tell Councilman G. and G. Ordano that we do have the mobile units. I don't know if you're referring to the mobile units or the static units that, I think the static signs where you have the speed limit sign, and then underneath there is a, there's a radar detection in there.
This was a new one that I just saw, and I'm trying to remember where I saw it, but it was a electronic stop sign with an LED unit on top that was just installed, permanently installed. So, I don't remember it's, I know it's in Bel Air somewhere, so I don't know if maybe if that was done by the Bel Air Police Department or something, but I did see that, and I thought, well, there was the LED idea I had with speed, but I wanted it with the stop signs.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bueller?
Yes. Thank you, Council President, and a good presentation, Mr. Robey. We all know about, as far as the stats, the major cause of accidents, speeding, cell phones, but you mentioned structure. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. So, these are, this is something that you'll find all across the country. I was just looking at a study a few weeks ago where there was a community out on the West Coast that they had lots of roads with heavy curvatures, so lots of curbs in the road, and they were finding the majority of their accidents, when they were looking at accident data in those areas, were vehicles that were running off of the road. So, they actually put pavement markings down, they put rumble strips in place to try to slow the traffic down. So, areas of, areas where there's roadways, whether it's a, it's an intersection, whether it's a curvature in the road, whether it's the design of the road that doesn't, that's not, you know, the specifications would not lend to proper traffic flow, these are those areas that we're trying to look at and that we meet, when we meet with our, that's why the partnership is bringing together all those partners. So, we're bringing traffic engineering in, we're bringing state highway administration in, we're talking about areas of concern in the county. I know Councilman Schroeds, a number of times, we've talked about east-west highway and some of those intersections there. So, we're trying to look at what can we do from an enforcement standpoint to slow the traffic down, make sure people are paying attention, but also from an infrastructure standpoint, do we need to put in more traffic circles? Do we need to put in more pavement markings? Do we need to reconfigure the design of the roadway because the design of the roadway doesn't allow for, you know, isn't as safe as it could possibly be? So, we're looking at those infrastructure concerns, which would come under the Department of Public Works and Maryland State Highway Administration to help us facilitate making those changes and fixes.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear. You are looking at it in specific areas, so that's what I wanted to hear. Okay.
Each traffic safety advisory meeting, they have the ability to present their new projects that they have going forward, and then we look at and match it with accident data to see if there's, to see if there's areas where we could focus on and push those towards projects to improve the roadways there and infrastructure concerns.
Okay. That's what I want to hear. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council.
Agenda Item Number 7: Approval of Minutes. Public hearing, May 3, 2022. Legislative Day 22-014, May 3, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being none, the corrections, no, being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda Item 8: Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. We have none. Agenda Item Number 9: Introduction of Bills. Mr. Wagner, please read in Bills 22-014 through 22-018 in the record for introduction.
Bill Number 22-014, introduced by Council President Schroeds. An Act to repeal and reenact with amendments--
Mr. Schroeds.
Subsection, excuse me?
You said President.
I'm sorry.
I got promoted.
Yeah, you did. Everybody got promoted tonight. Councilmember Schroeds, I'm sorry. An Act to repeal and reenact with amendments, subsection C.1 of Section 267-27, accessory uses and structures of Article 5, supplementary regulations of Part 1, standards of Chapter 267, zoning of the Hartford County Code as amended, to provide that an accessory structure shall not exceed 50% of the total square footage of the usable space of the primary structure. Okay.
Version, I just laid in front of you.
Yeah. So, let's see which one. Please. An Act to repeal and reenact with amendments, subsection C.1 of Section 267-27, accessory uses and structures of Article 5, supplementary regulations of Part 1, standards of Chapter 267, zoning of the Hartford County Code as amended, to provide that an accessory structure shall not exceed 50% of the total square footage of the primary structure or 1,000 square feet, whichever is greater, to provide that an accessory structure shall not exceed 50% of the total square footage of the primary structure or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater, for properties greater than five acres in the Ag. District and generally relating to zoning. By the Council, May 10, 2022, introduce red first-time order posted in public hearing scheduled on June 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Oops, I'm sorry. Bill Number 22-015, introduced by Council President Vincenzo at the request of the County Executive, an Act to revise prior bond legislation due to the reduced cost for some of the capital projects, to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 1 of Bill Number 12-036 as amended, and to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 1 of Bill Number 20-012 as amended. By the Council, May 10, 2022, introduce red first-time order posted in public hearing scheduled on June 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Bill Number 22-016, introduced by Council President Vincenzo at the request of the County Executive, a bill to authorize and empower Hartford County, Maryland to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue and sell its bonds or other evidences of indebtedness, including lease financing, in an amount not to exceed $123,60,000. Principal amount, the proceeds thereof, to be used for the expansion, reconstruction, rehabilitation, renovation, and improvement of certain projects as described in the annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance, Bill Number 22-009 as amended, for the year ending June 30, 2023, and as described in this bill in accordance with Section 524 of the Charter of Hartford County and Section 123-40 of the Code of Hartford County, or as otherwise permitted by law, authorizing the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, and perends the County Council, to adopt an administrative resolution that shall provide for the the county council, to adopt an administrative resolution that shall provide for the form of instrument by which any indebtedness is to be evidenced, the manner by which bonds and any other indebtedness may be secured, and the rate or rates of interest to be paid, and generally relating, generally for, I lost my place, for such other matters as may be deemed appropriate by the county council in connection therewith, and authorizing the county council in connection therewith, authorizing the county council by administrative resolution or the county executive of Hartford County, Maryland, in perens the county executive, by executive order to determine the form of various documents as are necessary or desirable to implement the financing authorized herein, the manner of issuance and delivery of any bonds or any other evidences of indebtedness, the date, the payment of all necessary expenses in connection therewith, the method by which bonds or expenses or any other evidences of indebtedness shall be sold, maturity schedule and redemption provisions, authorizing the appointment of certain agents and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of bonds or any other evidences of indebtedness, providing that bonds or any other indebtedness shall be issued upon the full faith and credit and taxing power of Hartford County, Maryland, providing for the issuance of bond anticipation notes or other form of indebtedness upon adoption of an administrative resolution by the county council approving the interest rate or rates to be borne thereby for all or a portion of the projects described herein, for which the proceeds of sale of the bond anticipation notes shall be used, providing that after the issuance of the bond anticipation notes in perens or other form of indebtedness or any other, for any renewal thereof, the county council shall authorize the issuance of bonds to pay said bond anticipation notes in perens or other form of indebtedness, providing that upon written recommendation of the county executive and administrative resolution of the county council, all or a portion of indebtedness authorized herein intended to be utilized for programs or projects for managing, producing, treating, recapturing, abating, or controlling non-point sources of water pollution, including stormwater or subsurface drainage water, included among the projects described in section 1 of this bill, may be incurred pursuant to loans from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration, providing for disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of bonds or other indebtedness authorized herein, and for levying of charges, assessments, and all taxes necessary to provide payment of the principal of and premium in perens, if any, and interest on bonds or other form of indebtedness, providing that certain additional matters may be determined by resolution of the county council or may be reserved unto the county executive as prescribed by such resolution, providing the method of fixing the interest rate to be borne by such bonds, and generally providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith, and generally relating to funding of the projects described herein by the council, May 10, 2022, introduced red first time, ordered posted in public hearing scheduled for June 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Bill number 22-17, introduced by Council President Vincenzo at the request of the county executive, a bill to authorize and empower Hartford County, Maryland to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue and sell its bonds or other evidences of indebtedness in perens, including lease financing, in an amount not to exceed $10,965,000 in perens, as stated in the numerics. Principal amount, the proceeds thereof to be used for the expansion, reconstruction, rehabilitation, renovation, and improvement of certain water and sewer projects as described in the annual budget and appropriation ordinance, bill number 22-009 as amended for the year ending June 30, 2023, and it is as described in this bill in accordance with section 524 of the Charter of Hartford County and sections 123-40 and 256-26 of the Code of Hartford County, or as otherwise permitted by law, authorizing the county council of Hartford County, Maryland, in perens the county council, to adopt an administrative resolution that shall provide for the form of instrument by which any indebtedness is to be evidenced, by the manner by which bonds and any other indebtedness may be secured, and the rate or rates of interest to be paid, and generally relate, generally for such other matters as may be deemed appropriate by the county council in connection therewith, and authorizing the county council by administrative resolution or the county executive of Hartford County, Maryland, in perens the county executive, by executive order to determine the form of various documents as are necessary or desirable to implement the financing authorized herein, the manner of issuance and delivery of any bonds or any other evidences of indebtedness, the payment of all necessary expenses in connection therewith, the method by which bonds or any other evidences of indebtedness shall be sold, maturity schedule and redemption provisions, authorizing the appointment of certain agents and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of bonds or any other evidences of indebtedness, providing that the bonds, that bonds or any other indebtedness shall be issued upon the full faith and credit of and taxing power of Hartford County, Maryland, providing for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in perens or other form of indebtedness upon adoption of an administrative resolution by the county council approving the interest rate or rates to be borne thereby for all or a portion of the projects described herein, for which the proceeds of sale of the bond anticipation notes shall be used, providing that after the issuance of the bond anticipation notes in perens or other form of indebtedness or any renewal thereof, the county council shall authorize the issuance of bonds to pay said bond anticipation notes in perens or other form of indebtedness, providing that upon written recommendations, singular, written recommendation of the county executive and administrative resolution of the county council, all or a portion of the indebtedness authorized herein may be incurred pursuant to loans from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration, providing for disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of bonds or other indebtedness authorized herein, and for levying of charges, assessments, and all taxes necessary to provide payment of the principal of and premium in perens, if any, and interest on bonds or other form of indebtedness, providing that certain additional matters may be determined by resolution of the county council or may be reserved unto the county executive as prescribed by such resolution, providing the method of fixing the interest rates to be borne by such bonds, and generally providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith, and generally relating to funding of the projects described herein by the council, May 10, 2022, introduced red first time, order posted in public hearing scheduled on June 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Bill number 22-018, introduced by Council President Vincenzo at the request of the county executive, an emergency act to add new section, new article 22 Hartford County Police Accountability Board and new article 22A Hartford County Administrative Charging Committee to Part 3, authoritative boards and commissions of Chapter 9, boards and commissions, councils, and agencies of the Hartford County Code as amended, to establish the Hartford County Police Accountability Board, to establish the membership and duties of the boards, to establish a citizen complaint process regarding police misconduct, to establish the Hartford County Administrative Charging Committee, to define certain terms, to establish the membership and duties of the committee, and generally relating to police accountability by the council, May 10, 2022, introduced red first time, ordered posted in public hearing scheduled on June 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Agenda item number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. Agenda item number 11, call for final reading of bills, bill 22-006, council. We will not consider this this evening as Councilman Johnson is looking at a couple of amendments to it, so we will hold it till next week. Agenda number 12, enrollment of bills, we have none, unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have none. And if I may, Councilman Johnson, under 16, business from council members, I'd like to start with you.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be very brief tonight. So, I used to always say, what does right look like in the military? What does right look like? And I pride myself on allowing that to be my beacon, my signpost. And last week, I failed to do that because I should have spoken out for the people of the Paramount Peninsula about the veto override, and for that, I apologize. I truly apologize because if there's one thing that I can do from this diocese is that I can be the voice, even if I can't get anything passed or what have you. I can at least be the voice for the people of this county, so for that, I truly apologize. I tell my kids all the time that when you do something wrong, accept it, own it, and do better. And I promise you that that will never happen again, and I will do better. I will not make any excuses for, you know, not speaking out last week, because we can all, we all have excuses and we can all make excuses, but everyone has an excuse. I will just, I would just make a charge to you that, you know, I will do better, because the people of this great county deserve better from their elected officials. So, with that, Council President, I'll yield my time back.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. Candle Rum in Main Street changed ownership. We went to ribbon cutting last week. Wish Don Messing all his energy. I wish him good luck in that. This, actually yesterday, last evening, attended the Society of Italian American Businessmen's Scholarship Dinner where they gave out $15,000 worth of scholarships to seven different people. The main award is due to the founder of it, which is the Mark Dardozzi Award, where one person gets a full scholarship to Hartford Community College for a full year. The award winner was Ariana Glorioso. So, it's open to anybody. They can apply, and I'm glad that they're back and doing full, I guess, awards in seven. I think it's going up from there. So, thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Schroes?
Thank you, Council President. Over the weekend, I attended the Abington Fire Banquet, where we recognized many of our first responders and just want to thank them again for their great service to our county. Also, the other day, you and I attended the Emmerton Elementary School Patriot Assembly, and I know that you may have something to say about that, but those kids work really hard and they're definitely true patriots and have a great understanding of our country and that freedom is not free, and they just did an amazing job. It was a nice assembly. And lastly, as you know, it's been, we've had a tremendous amount of rain, and I encourage you to come out to the Jaredsville Alliance Club Carnival and spend lots of money. It's our main fundraiser of the year, and we give it directly back into the community and some other causes as well. And then finally, I know we're all missing Traffic Jam Jimmy. I had the good fortune of meeting him two years ago when I planned, I guess, a quarter of farm equipment to recognize North Hartford seniors. He came up and, you know, he's the type of guy, you meet him one time, he's your friend forever. And I know that, you know, he was just, I thought of him as being the spirit of Baltimore in our region. You know, oftentimes, you turn on the news, you see lots of negative things and such on TV, but what he did is he showed the good and the good in our people and our community. And I know a lot of us are gonna miss him. It just hasn't been the same to not be able to tune into him in the morning to see him. He was just a great, great person, a good character, fun guy to be around, and I know that thousands and thousands of people are gonna miss him. So, my condolences to his family and friends.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Mr. Wagner?
If weather permits, second Saturday does begin this weekend at Aberdeen Festival Park, farmers market, local vendors, music at the pavilion, and that evening, there'll be a movie night that's under the stars, so anybody's looking to attend, bring a chair or a blanket. 50th Anniversary Celebration at John Archer School is this Saturday, May 14, at 3:00 p.m. And then the Aberdeen BNO train station has an open house coming up on May 21, 1 to 4, West Bel Air Avenue in Aberdeen. They're making some great strides to working on getting that into shape from the disarray, well, what kind of disarray that it was in. The Friends is what they call themselves, a nonprofit that's working on rehabilitating that BNO rail station, and it dates back to 1885, and I think it's only one of maybe two or three that are still in existence from 1885, or back in the day when Frank Furnas was the one who was the architect and designed it. And it was quite the structure in its day, and certainly, the Aberdeen was a main hub here in Hartford County to the east coast and the United States, too, in terms of the canning industry that existed in Aberdeen and around in Hartford County. So, anything you can do to help promote the rehabilitation of the train, which it's gonna be a museum eventually, is where they want to go with this, and possibly some other uses, but it'll be a real, a great place to have the, as you start into, down Bel Air Avenue as a gateway going into the city of Aberdeen. When it's finished, it'll be quite, quite the piece. So, we look forward to that coming around. They've gotten some grants, and they're well on their way to getting someplace that's gonna make a big difference here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Beulah?
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd just like to speak on the moratorium for the Paramount Peninsula. The county council hired outside counsel to determine the legality of the moratorium. The report came back, and there was no doubt that the moratorium was illegal. And at that point in time, there was no real support to override the county executive's veto. And as far as speaking last week, I wasn't prepared to speak on it. I don't like to shoot from the hip. I like to make sure I have all the facts before I speak on something, because every word counts and the facts count. So, that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Beulah. Back to agenda item 15, business from the president. Tomorrow evening in these chambers, we will host the final fiscal year '23 budget public hearing at 7:00 p.m. And then also, as Councilman Schroes said, we had the opportunity to attend the Emmerton Elementary School Patriot Program. And what I thought was interesting were they had 15 fifth grade patriots, and those 15 children knew going into this program that there wasn't gonna be the same celebration that they've had in the past because of COVID. And there was not gonna be a trip. They were doing it because they wanted to do it, and all 15 signed up and went through the program in its entirety. And of course, at the end of the day yesterday, they were surprised by a trip to Washington, DC. So, I want to thank them for their commitment and their parents, their teachers, the volunteers that helped them go through the program. And, you know, this is just one Patriot Program, and our children, you know, all across the county participate, so we look forward to attending those. Today, I had the honor to attend the Fallen Heroes Memorial Service for the Hartford County Sheriff's Office. And as a part of that, obviously, we get to remember and honor our fallen, but today was kind of special because we were able to honor a 49-year service member from the Maryland Department of Transportation Authority, and he's also a Baltimore City Police Officer, retired from there, joined the Transportation Authority, and now is stepping down from there. And his name is Mike Dunn. And many of you will recognize Mike Dunn for his part and role in honoring our fallen across the state. He's been in Hartford County a couple of times, but he knows all of the details and pretty much heads up all of these remembrances. And so, we wish him a great retirement. And with that, I believe that'll be the end of comments. And with that, I believe that'll be the end of comments. Ms. Dixon, under comments from attending citizens, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two this evening. Vicki Jones, followed by Lauren Anderson.
Good evening, ma'am, name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Vicki Jones, my address is on file. If you're not aware, there's a group in Hartford County called Moms for Liberty. Moms for Liberty has chapters nationwide. This group started making the news last year and has finally hit our county. It disgusts and disappoint me, disappoints me that our county continues to be a haven for these hate groups, and that the only leaders I've heard in the county flat out denounce groups like this is Councilman Johnson. Instead, many of you socialize and spend time with them on your personal time, and I ask you, what kind of message are you setting by doing this? Moms for Liberty says that they're concerned about failing students, inappropriate curriculum, sexually explicit books, education loss, and increased violence. They want to empower parents with effective ways to fight back against what they feel is the destruction of our youth. One of the admins for this local group is Stella Peters. We all know Stella is the one who posed with the Proud Boys and who helped to create an atmosphere of hostility and chaos at the August school board meeting. This Moms group was meeting at St. Mark's Church tomorrow, but after repeated calls, the church canceled it. Now they're planning on meeting at 510 Johnny's, and I'm going to guess that 510 is probably going to cancel that too. Here's what St. Mark said. "St. Mark Parish was scheduled to host a meeting tomorrow evening regarding certain areas of concern with Hartford County Public Schools. This meeting has been canceled. The parish and the archdiocese of Baltimore do not endorse the agenda of the Moms for Liberty organization." As of yesterday, there were 189 members of Moms for Liberty, some of the people in this room are part of that group, or and/or they're running for the Board of Education and council seats as well. This Moms group has also tagged and visited privately with several high-ranking elected officials, including men on this council. There's nothing wrong with passion, especially when it comes to our children, but spreading misinformation, stoking fear, and promoting prejudices is not the way to make things better for our kids. We, the NAACP, will continue to work with like-minded people in this community to make sure we stop racism in its tracks. Lastly, please vote. Research each candidate before you cast your vote and ask questions. Whatever you do, make sure the person that you choose is interested in progress and equity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am, name an address, please.
Good evening, Lauren Anderson, address is on file. The not only lack of vote last week, but the complete lack of acknowledgement of Bill 22-003 as a whole was yet again another slap in the face to the people of Perryman. County Executive Glassman vetoed Bill 22003 stating that it, as amended, threatens the rights of all Hartford County property owners, yet went on to list four reasons, all of which, to my knowledge, did not address how the bill threatened the rights of a property owner in any way. And then on top of it, reason four stated that finally instituting a temporary moratorium to study such issues such as acreage, building size, traffic, and environmental impacts is illegal in light of the fact that the current law requires all of those issues to be reviewed and addressed prior to approval of the development project. Number four is my favorite, due to the tinge of hypocrisy of it all. The property owners themselves have stated along with Mr. Davenport at the DAC meeting on January 19, that these warehouse distribution centers were predicated on Woodley Road extending to 715. There are not one, but eight already built warehouses back on Woodley Road and Chelsea Road with no connection to 715 yet, and last I checked, the proposed plans for the additional 5.2 million square feet of distribution centers has no connection proposed. And the word on the street from people in this very building are despite what Mr. Davenport said at that DAC meeting, that it's not actually almost there because the state can't afford and/or doesn't want part in the connection. Furthermore, you have the study from S.H.A. stating that there were substantial deficiencies in the traffic impact study, providing 22 comments illustrating the state did not concur with the report findings, and yet the developer stands up here with reasons why those are not applicable to them and they're not required to address them. Additionally, we were told developers can't exceed the 50% impervious cover within the Perryman wealth field, however, we know this not to hold true either because zoning appeal case number 5949 for 1,500 Woodley Road, which I believe ended up being the Wayfair Warehouse. The developer requested and was granted a variance to exceed the 50% impervious surface cap by 3.4%, which added an additional 166 and 400 square feet on top of the already 1 million-plus square foot building for all for an additional 278 parking spaces. The residents were seeking a moratorium because the issues do not only not get resolved prior to approval of the projects, the projects still somehow get pushed forward. Perryman is tired of the broken promises and frankly, the disregard of the so-called rules and regulations and laws that you so claim to uphold. These projects are quite opposite of an improvement to the Perryman area as the county and the developer claim them to be. To quote the smart and witty Judge Judy, "Don't pee on my lake and tell me it's raining." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no one else signed up, this meeting will be adjourned.